On the agenda. Leanne, are you ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Like the call of the meeting, Munster Town Council regular meeting on March or May first. At seven o'clock to order, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki. Councillor Kulturitis.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present. We can all rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, and to this world with its fair and justice for all.
Like to make announcement that the public hearing, the Community Development Block Grant CDVG is postponed to next meeting, May fifteenth. And at this time is it's open the floor for public comment, we kindly ask that all in person public comment is limited to two minutes. Maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. And in the event that questions are raised or posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes. And refer these questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow and response. Public comment may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about agenda items, items on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes. Please email that question or comment to town manager Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster.org. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council during the public comment section of the meeting? Anybody? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section of the meeting. And we'll move into the consent agenda.
President, I move we accept the consent agenda second.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. We'll move into the items under old business, the first item on the agenda is ordinance eighteen ninety-nine, this is amendment number two to the two thousand twenty-three salary ordinance. This is second reading of this ordinance.
Second reading ordinance eighteen ninety-nine is to expand police department to forty-four officers and it allows for transitional employees.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance eighteen ninety-nine on second reading, yes, present.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Councillor Mellon, any discussion or questions?
There've been no changes since the first meeting.
No changes since the first reading.
Good, seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Second item under old businesses ordinance nineteen hundred, this is estimating water accounts, this is also second read.
This gives water billing the opportunity to assess fines if people are not residents aren't responding when their water meter needs to be inspected and or upgraded.
Good.
Mr. President, I move we adopt introduced ordinance nineteen hundred on second.
Thank you, there is a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on into items for new business. First on the, under new business is ordinance nineteen oh-two, this is the amendment to the ARPA ARPA Plan, first read. For Treasury Miss, anything to add?
Um, no, just what is stated there, uh, two weeks ago, when we met and we talked about paying for the radios for the police department. Um, the question came up, how do we pay for them? And our funds are acceptable for this for four hundred and fifty-five thousand seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. And that leaves us with a balance of our funds of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars and eighty-two cents, which we have yet to allocate for spending. So we would like, we're proposing that we use our funds to pay for the radios for this department.
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance C nineteen oh-two on fourth reading today and schedule second reading for the next three to four years.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. President. For the five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that are remaining, just curious if we'll be able to have a work study or some sort of meeting to iron out what the plans are for the.
It was talked about the agenda review that we would, the town manager, controller, myself, deputy town manager would sit and compile a list to present to council and discuss the study.
Yes, I would anticipate probably within the next two months, we'll have that uh, of or proposal or format from the staff bringing it to the council for work.
It's time to use of the essence to allocate these funds and have them obligated because there's potential they are reverted back to federal government, which would not be good.
That's right, part of my understanding of the reason to do this at this time was just.
Absolutely.
Integrative, but quite end of year. All those ones.
That would be great.
Very good. Nothing, very good, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to item B, the engagement letter for the landfill assurance test. And with annual test here, for treasure miss, anything to add?
This just assures everyone that we, if something were to go wrong, we have the funding for it. Making it hard for everyone to see that there it is.
There is a recommendation in your board packet?
Mr. President, I move to approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for the annual landfill assurance test of around seven thousand four hundred.
Oh, sir, there's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Dustin, this is something we have to do every year.
It is.
This isn't the, the topic that councillor Reed went down to state the testing or doing this.
No, that was uh, the disposition of the tank underneath public works on the public works facility. We had to monitor that and monitor that and monitor that. And that was what I believe you're referring to, we were finally able to get uh, concurrence from item that we no longer have to monitor. I think that was in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen.
This is primarily something we have to do every year.
This is for the landfill itself, it's, this is a, this is a regulation.
Very good. See no other questions, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter C, on-call planning services, Deputy Tom Manager, De Tomaso, anything to add to this? Or can you give a little bit of background please?
Um, we talked to HWC Engineering about uh, providing us with a proposal to provide on-call planning services because our planner and planning director. Um, left his last day was April twenty-first and he did a lot of work around here and it was very specialized and we feel we need a little bit of help. Um, so we did, after talking about this agenda review, we did have Mr. Westland look at the, look at the agreement, he did make some red lines. I believe HWC has agreed to those, it's not reflected in the attachment that's in your packet. Um, but we have gone back and forth a couple of times with them on that, so we'll have a attorney approved agreement ready.
I, I am seeing some strikeouts, just wanted to clarify that this is or this might be.
Those strikeouts were, they, they came to us, that it came to us with the black strikeouts in it. So it must be from there because some of it is um, I think related to more engineering kind of um, jobs and so they took out some of the stuff that doesn't apply to this particular contract.
So are, are we able to approve this? Yes, you are.
Very good, Attorney Wesley, is there, the nature of the strikeouts or the nature of the changes you had, didn't physically or didn't alter the contract per se, it was more minor points?
I, yeah, I don't know how I characterize them, but they've made the change.
Bad question.
They, they've made the changes that I suggested be made. Okay, and then.
It's reflected in this document.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, the one that you are seeing now is the updated.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I looked at it quickly and I didn't see this.
Okay, but the strikeouts, those were in the original document and that's fine.
I think one important thing to point out is that the town has on the books an ordinance that allows us to charge applicants the cost to review. So uh, we will be, if we get a complex uh, application from a developer and we have to ship this and have uh, HWC put a lot of work into this. We have the ability to claw that back uh, with our existing ordinances and pay for that review. So uh, this should be a, a near net zero cost to us.
I would just ask that we, if as we foresee that situation, I mean, this tells anyone that we may charge applicants, so we just be upfront about their, the situation they need to pay since we have outside support.
I agree, no one wants a surprise bill.
We will have outside support after someone, why don't I move uh, to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement for professional services with HWC Engineering to provide temporary planning services.
I'll second that, there is a motion, a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do they have a office up here, these people?
They do have an office up here, the person that will be providing the reviews for us primarily uh, is a senior planner and project manager, she's located in Indianapolis. Uh, we've had a kind of, not an interview, but a preliminary discussion with her to see if it was a good match, Jill and I both think that this is feasible. Uh, she will be coming up to, you know, get to know staff a little bit, but really what we're buying is the technical abilities, not the management abilities. So that, that's less crucial, given the narrow scope of what we're asking this uh, person to do and what we're asking permission to engage in. Uh, it could, it can probably be done remotely uh, for a temporary basis and that's what we're proposing.
That leaves me with my next question. Do not have these type of engineering firms up here or in place in Vienna, we're going down Indianapolis, why we picked them and not some units up here?
I think HWC has the best local planning services available.
That's what I figured, but I want to make sure.
You're good, other questions, please?
I just ask a clarifying question, I mean, I'm in supportive of it, I would also like to make comment just to thank Tom, everyone for their service.
I guess, I guess.
Oh, gonna be, um, anyone who drives around town uh, can, can see the impact of the zoning ordinance and fractional way uh, that he's managed these difficult jobs, it'd be hard for us to replace him. And we're like, he's not that far away in Mercy. Um, I'm just trying now to imagine as a plant commission member, what those meetings will look like, will they be facilitated via Zoom by this fractional planning person or the town staff facilitated and they're doing technical review?
What I imagine is the first meeting, if, will probably be Mr. Christianson being here physically. Uh, and then as we learn together, right, new things are new and you don't know how to do everything on the first try, right? Like there's a getting to know you period and there's a establishment of practices and habits and personalities and that kind of thing. Uh, I would imagine that is possible if it goes well, that it could be via Zoom, we have applicants appear uh, via Zoom. Uh, and you will have either Jill or and or I in the room on the plane uh, in BZA meetings as well.
Yeah, I know there are ordinances governing how the plant commission members can or limitations on virtual participation. But um, are there any ordinances that cover staff?
No.
And the, and the eight thousand a month or twenty-four thousand, not to exceed, so if they don't use the ten, ten hours per week. The cost to drive up here, how much space could be covered by that, it's all in, not just travel.
Yes, well, with, they can't, they can't exceed that number without our approval.
Right, but whenever they do something, it's going to be a go rate. So you're giving authorization.
Yeah.
Okay, now this is necessary.
Did you have, Councillor? I do, thank you, I, um, we had talked about it, the gender review and the um, the hourly rate was brought up and which position it would be, did you just say that the um, she is senior project?
She's a project manager and she will be billed at one hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. There are other positions in there because, you know, you, we don't know the future and you don't know what you'll pull in uh, for staff wise. Most likely it would be a lower staff member for, you know, plat review and stuff like that. Uh, I can imagine a scenario where you might have a more senior person say, hey, take a look at this, right, like. Uh, and if we don't include that in here, then that's a whole like thing, it's like you gotta ask a question, but you don't have permission to ask the question. The person who's going to be doing the work is Rachel Christianson, uh, she bills at one seventy-five an hour.
I just wanted to make sure because obviously that, that will affect how many hours we get.
Yeah, for sure.
Amount, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good, other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to letter D, this is disposal of surplus property, both from the clerk treasurers office and the police department. There are two memos in front of the council for your review, this in the equipment. From the clerk's office and the uh, police department.
Can we vote for both at one time?
Yes, please. Spring cleaning in the, in town hall.
Yes, I move we approve the disposal of surplus equipment from the clerk treasurer's office and the police department.
I'll second the question.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
First of all, thank you. Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Letter E, server for the police department cameras, there's a memo from Lieutenant Damon Johnson in front of you. Spells out what they're looking for, uh, we also have Police Chief Shackler here, we have any questions? Fortunately, the memo does not have a, a, a motion, a recommended motion, but there is a request approving uh, at the last line. Move that we approve the standard commercial security agreement for Millian Systems Incorporated for forty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
Can, can we just have that motion uh, contingent upon striking the rest of paragraph twenty-five?
Oh, is that not reflected in here?
So, Mr. J- Mr. Johnson had me review the document and I had indicated that we needed paragraph twenty-one, twenty-four and twenty-five struck. Which you'll see a big red X through them, the problem is, is that paragraph twenty-five continued on to the next page and it didn't get that thing.
The second page.
There's no X on the second page and some of the really kind of crummy language is in that part that wasn't struck. So in talking to the chief uh, before the meeting and, and Damon as well over the weekend, told him just. If the motion is just with striking paragraphs twenty-one, twenty-four and twenty-five in its entirety. Then it could be approved tonight and then they just need to make that additional red X. So if that could be the motion.
Mr. Johnson, you made the motion, you amend your motion for that, right? So, so amended, okay, second, second, our motion to second are both amended, now we can have discussion, is there any discussion? Thank you, Dave. Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Uh, then we move into letter F, uh, the non-binding letter of intent with regards to uh, the ready grant and the Saxon partner development.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson, anything to add?
I, just a little context, uh, the state of Indiana appropriated, you know, a few hundred million dollars for ready grants throughout the state. Uh, the Northwest Indiana Forum was successful in uh, applying for twenty-four, twenty-seven million of that and of that twenty-four point seven. Uh, infrastructure improvements for the proposed development at the Lansing Country Club were included. Uh, so there's all kinds of compliance with that, uh, and in an effort to uh. Keep that money on the table, as it were, the, the forum needs some kind of indication from the town that we're still interested in potentially partnering with Saxon Partners. On the development of the Lansing Country Club. Now certainly, as we discussed at the last council meeting, there's some reasonable questions that we have uh, that uh, we're working through with Baker Tilly and the developer. And so in light of that, the, the letter, and I thank uh, Attorney Westland for crafting it, in no way is very clear, this is non-binding uh, in, 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 in letter and intent. Uh, but it does show that there is a spirit of potential collaboration if everything is answered in the, in the way that the town's interested in. And that should be enough for that one point four million dollars of money from the state of Indiana to stay on the table for the, the use of uh, infrastructure improvement. So what you have before you is a, a, a non-binding letter of intent that shows the town is still working through our due diligence uh, and considering a potential partnership with Saxon. For the development of the Lansing Country Club.
Very good, thank you. There is a recommendation from the council. Move we accept the post letter, offer as the council president or his designate to sign on behalf of the town.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
I appreciated the summary of the development plan and development agreement. Are you able to give us just the status, not the detailed words? So where, where do we stand on those documents?
There are many documents, Councillor Tulowitzki, which, could you reframe the question for me so I could answer it more accurately?
So as I read the non-binding agreement, it talks about um. For example, Saxon will instruct the project pursuant to development plan summary, development agreement summary, potential summary. Really, you know, the development plan is the one that goes before the plan commission and development agreement law. And council, with the main two of us.
Okay, so the development agreement is kind of, you know, circling the airport, right? Because of the, what the discussion we had at the last meeting, we have reasonable questions, they don't have the ability to answer those questions, so. We brought in other people who have the horsepower and the bandwidth to answer those questions. So really until we know uh, the full economic impact is what they're studying, it's. There, there's not a lot to be gained by spending uh, time and traction and working on that development agreement. I think, you know, we understand fairly clearly where each party is and where we have an opportunity is filling in some of those unknowns, those known unknowns, and that's what we're working on right now.
And the development plan is more of a engineering document, basically.
Mm-hmm.
That one plus update, update.
Well, I mean. Yeah, I mean, it's a complex document with a lot of review. If, if you'd like a detailed update as where that is, I can provide that to you. I don't want to speak extemporaneously because I'll get something wrong and I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
I'm just trying to get a general sense for where the project stands.
Yeah, the, the Saxon partners has gone before what the plan commission number of times, right, at their own risk, right? Because there is a development agreement, so I think they're acting in good faith, uh, and they, they've made significant process on the, the, the development plan, uh, plating. Uh, securing rights of way with NIPSCO and NICD, so they're, they're, they're pretty far down the tracks, as it were. Unintended.
Very good, any other comments, questions?
It's present, I would say, just for anyone uh, who is present tonight, who may have attended a past plan commission meeting. Um, it, it may be a little bit confusing because we have a plan commission, we have approved different phases. With the caveat that this is on, there is not a development agreement and therefore until there is one. They're doing this on their own, we are making good faith efforts to come to a development agreement, but if, but the end of the day, that can't be reached. They have been proceeding, proceeding with this on their own. So I see that's, you know, important to, because people might be hearing here, we don't have an agreement, things have been approved, but, but that's, that's how that's working.
And, and this letter enables us to stay in the running for the ready grant, it also doesn't stop an agreement, something is now being started. It protects one point four million dollars.
That's correct, yes, other comments or questions? Yes.
Attachment C, the financial summary, there's the total project cost should be a hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. And.
Yeah, you're missing a few zeros.
So zeros, yes.
I think it's a hundred and sixty-three million.
Sorry, I was quick to the math here and, and then there's also on the ready grant badge update there, I'm gonna give an update. Data number there as well. So just so you're.
Those are just some scrivener's errors.
As you say.
As they may say, very good, um, see no other comments or questions, roll call please.
And, um, Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter G, this is the NICD invoice number three nine eight two. Deputy Tom Manager, De Tomaso, anything to add? Or can you give a little bit of an update since we're talking about the NICD Westlake corridor and can you give us maybe a brief update on what's happening?
Definitely, um, this invoice represents a turning point in the process, we, we're, we're pretty much done paying for the design for the upgrades at the two stations. So um, last week, we met at NICD's offices and took a look at some um, samples for the brick and the stone cladding and the limestone. Um, that will be used to build both of those stations and they're up there, right? Do we want to show?
Sure.
So that was kind of exciting and we asked for some additional samples um, of the limestone in order to make a, a, a choice there, but this has given the. Joint Venture a chance to start procuring some materials to start working on those two structures. Um, in addition, around town, um, there's been a lot of visible progress, both north of Ridge Road with the um, retaining walls are pretty much all built, they've been backfilling behind them, that's where the tracks are going to go. Uh, I believe their um, the structures on either side of the river are ready for the bridges and those, I, they're prefabbed and they're going to come in and they're going to set them with a crane. I don't think that's going to happen until the summer sometime, um. Fisher Street, as everyone knows, has been closed for about a month, it was supposed to open today, they're a little bit delayed um, because of uh, NIPSCO. Was making them jump through, through some hoops because they're doing some work right there where that big high pressure uh, transmission main comes through. Um, they are on target to be done and have the road open Wednesday night. So that's good news, um, and then the next uh, road impacted will be Forty-Fifth Street and that will start with some NIPSCO relocations. And then they're relocating some town-owned utilities there as well to get them encased in a lower, you know, deeper underneath the tracks there, um. And then the other thing I, down a path, just south of Fisher, they've started doing some digging for um, retaining walls, that's where the um, tracks will start to climb. Because they're flying over Forty-Fifth, so that it's going to be a combination of retaining walls and then piers, actual bridge, a bridge structure. So that work has started there as well.
Very good, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Uh, but what's in front of us, uh, tonight is the, uh, invoice three nine eight two, uh, that there's a recommendation, uh, to the council. Move we authorize payment on invoice number thirty-nine sixty-nine to the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. From the tip allocation fund.
Mr. President, I just have a clarification. In the subject is three nine eight two, as you just said, and, uh, recommendation lines, three nine six nine, do we know which invoice it is?
Uh, let me double check, but.
In, in the packs, in the.
I think it's three nine eight two and I just forgot to change it in the, in the recommendation line.
So correct. So Dr. Annie has corrected his motion to reflect three ninety-two?
Yes.
Three ninety-two.
I apologize.
And I'll say, okay, there is a second, uh, any, uh, discussion? See a none, roll call, please?
Second in there?
Um, busy, our counselor too.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Last item on the agenda, letter H is the town hall generator release of final retainage. It means this project is completed. Uh, Deputy, uh, Tom Andrew D Tomaso, anything to add to this?
Yeah.
Okay, there is a recommendation in front of us?
Mr. President, I move. That we approve the release of retainage in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, fifty cents to Continental Electric Company, Inc. for the town of Monster Generator System.
Second, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? See a none, roll call, please?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis and Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also wanted to add, uh. Councilman Downs has been here and I think it was persistence in regards to make sure we got all our generators done.
Yeah.
Finally got it all completed, Dave, so.
Thank you very much.
Very good. That completes. Okay, okay, um. Then, uh, letter I, Forty-Fifth Street paving CSX right-of-way permit for paving work adjacent to the crossing. Three four one one three four P. Please, Jill, can you get over this?
Yes, I, I apologize for the lateness. This was the last thing to add this morning. Um. We. When you, when we awarded the contract to Milestone, we were really trying hard to work with NICD to get, um, this section of the road. That's around the tracks paved under their agreement with CSX, but they informed us that it, it's a very specific scope of work in that agreement and that they weren't going to be able to help us out. So, um, I contacted CSX and been, I've been told by them that we need to, um, apply for a right-of-entry permit. And there's a permit fee of twenty-five hundred dollars that has to be submitted in order to get this moving. I will say that. I've also been told it only takes a couple of weeks, so I'm hoping that it's not really going to delay us too much in getting the road paved.
We're going to pave, we're going to pave, and if we have to come back, we'll pave again.
Very good. There is a recommendation from the council?
Sir President, I offer as payment of twenty-five hundred dollars to CSX for a right-of-entry permit to perform paving operations. On Forty-Fifth Street in the vicinity of CSX crossing number three four one one three four. Followed by the letter.
Motion, a second, any discussion? See a none, roll call?
Counselor Schoen? Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen, did you answer?
No.
Okay.
People were talking.
Yes.
But now he's having helps.
All right, let's try this again. We're going to do a roll call here. Uh, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. Counselor Tulowitzki? Very good. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
I have a five zero vote on that.
Very good. That completes, that completes the new, new business portion of the meeting. Uh. Under reports, uh, Counselor Schoen, you'd like to talk about the NIPSCO free program to evaluate presidential building heat loss potential?
I would like to s- suggest to the residents who are here and anybody who watches this later, that, uh, NIPSCO has a free program whereby staff will come to your house. And assess it, uh, for the, uh, problems related to heat loss in the winter time or, uh, heat gain in the summertime. Uh, it's a free program and doesn't cost anything and. Think it would be. To a lot of people's advantage, a way of very easily lowering your electric bill. Uh, so you might want to take advantage of that. If that could be entered into the minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Uh, any other reports from the council?
Just had a question on that. Is. Is there a link to NIPSCO that we can put on the town website? Just refer back to that program since it's been interims. Are you aware of that? I'm not aware of it. I was, I didn't suggest it because I didn't know with, because NIPSCO is a private company and somehow or other we would promote it in one company. Although it's a monopoly, so it's not one company over another. It just didn't go that far. Thank you, but it might be something we put in news and you can use. A lot of people are paying higher bills. We know they're paying higher water bills. Uh, and this might be one way that people can save money.
It's called the home energy assessment. You can go on to the NIPSCO website and schedule.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Uh, any other reports from the council? See a none, uh, announcements. Uh, we have two meetings coming up. One is on Monday, May fifteenth. It's a regular town council meeting and redevelopment commission meeting. And then we also have a meeting on the first Monday in June, on June fifth, uh, that is also a regular town council meeting and redevelopment commission meeting. Uh, seen no other business before the council, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved, there's a motion, second, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned and then we'll move quickly into the redevelopment commission meeting. For.
Quickly.
Yeah, until time gets up here. Yeah, yeah, you can evaluate this. So close.
So the students are here that are leaving, they may want to wave.
If you guys just stick around for two minutes, then you can get pictures if you need to. If you don't care about pictures, but with this meeting, it'll take two minutes. If that much. Um, I will call the redevelopment commission, regular meeting of the town of Munster to order on May first. Roll call, please?
Commissioners Schoen?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
And school board liaison, John Castro. Nice to see you at the other end of the table.
Nice to see you as always. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Public comment section. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission? See a none, close the public comment section and we'll move into the consent agenda. Uh, motion, a second, uh, any discussion on the consent agenda, agenda? See a none, roll call, please?
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner?
Yes. Uh, there is no old business nor is there new business, no reports, no announcements. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. There's a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And now if you, students want to come here and get pictures or whatever else you need, we'd be happy to do that.
Thanks very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Can I just stand for you this time before we leave?